Ryan, good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, and I'm calling this meeting in the McComb Township Board of Trustees to order. Now, say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, under the Republic of Canada, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
And just so for anyone watching from home, our clerk is participating remotely today and because she is remote on any item, but she still will be performing her clerk duties. So with that, Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Cusmano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Treasurer Jollette.
Here.
Supervisor Viviana.
Here.
Moving on. We have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
If there is none, I move we present the agenda.
For any discussion on the approval of the agenda. Hearing none, we have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by treasurer Gillette to approve the agenda as presented. Most members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Support.
Is there any discussion on the bill run?
Mr. Chairman, I had a question regarding a particular item for VC3, Inc., for $13,680. Specifically, my question was whether or not there was going to be a review of that contract which was enacted for a three-year period, I believe, back in September of 2021. We had discussion before the meeting, indicated they were going to be reviewing that contract and making an evaluation and a recommendation to the board.
Correct. The contract was executed, I believe, in September. You're correct. I think it was effective January 1st. After January 1st of this year, the IT manager and I will review their performance and I'm happy to come back to the board at our second January meeting with the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no other comments about.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. Is there any other discussion on the bill run? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Nevers, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item four, approval of the previous meeting's minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Court. Discussion on the previous meeting's minutes. Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the previous meeting's minutes. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we're moving on to public comment. This is our first public comment opportunity. This is for agenda items only. Anyone participating remotely who wish to speak, please digitally raise your hand. If anyone present wishes to speak, please approach the microphone. I don't see anybody present. Is there anybody remotely? Okay, no one wishes to speak at this time. We will move on with the consent agenda.
Chair, I move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Court. Is there any discussion on any of the consent items? I do want to make note of one thing, item number nine. This request to purchase the licensing from CDWG, that is in actuality a modification of a previously approved server replacement. We have removed the licensing from the original quote. That's the servers. Equipment is being provided by VC3. The server license is now, we are purchasing from a different vendor. And in the process of making some changes, our IT manager saved us about $4,500. So I just wanted to make that one note on the consent agenda. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item ten is a public hearing. And is also going to be a resolution. So first, we're going to hold a public hearing, but before we get to that, I'm going to ask Mr. Pierce to give us a little background, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, board members. The township clerk's office received a request from MISC Properties to establish an industrial development district. They have a plan to expand the footprint of their business where it currently resides. And by approving an IDD, it allows them to be able to apply for a tax abatement in the future. So it went off the review. All reviews came back affirmative. And with that, requesting that you adopt the resolution for the industrial development district.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Any questions for Mr. Pierce before we open the public hearing? Okay. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. This is for comments on establishing the industrial development district as described by Mr. Pierce. Time is now 6:37 and the hearing is open. If you wish to participate remotely, please digitally raise your hand. I don't see anyone present who wishes to speak. Is there anyone remotely? On which is to speak, I will hold the public hearing and the time is 6:38 PM. The next part of this item, there is a request to adopt the resolution to establish the IDD for 16730 Enterprise Drive. This would be parcel 0820104004 and is located in the McCorm Corporate Center. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that move, Mr. Chairman. Court.
Is there any discussion or questions on resolution?
Chairman, I have a note in my preparation for this meeting. The resolution indicates a Clerk Posey, among all the other members of the board, is present. I don't know if that needs to be amended to indicate that she's present via Zoom.
If we can make that amendment before we execute the resolution.
We'll move that from the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Cusmano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. With no more questions, we have a motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to adopt the resolution to establish the IDD. Clerk Posey, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Treasurer Jollette.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviana.
Yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you, board members.
Pierce. Moving on to item 11. We have a request to approve the three-year extension to Peregrine Solutions for the printing and mailing of our utility bills as quoted in RFP 21-03. So moved.
Support.
Johnson.
All right. Good evening, board. So back in January, you approved is our mailing and printing of our bills, our water and sewer bills, and they've been doing a very good job. We've only had one minor hiccup where the bills maybe got to the residents a week late. But we had the ability to allow tracking of the bills to make sure that we could get them on time. And since then, we've have not hit an issue. So I've done a very good job. The pricing is right on point with how they bid it, which was roughly $900 a month or $10,800 a year. We're on par with that cost. With the extension, they are keeping their costs the same for the next three years, so it's not increasing. So we recommending that we extend this contract for another three years, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just like to note that at the time that this contract was originally awarded, there was some concerns. And one of those concerns was the price that Peregrine was providing was substantially lower than the price that the other bidders. And so there was a little bit of concern whether or not that would be reflected in any way in the service. And I'm happy to announce that, you know, with a very occasional rough edge early on, it's been working out very well. But we have done pretty well in accepting even though it was a much lower bid, it's worked out well.
Thank you, treasurer Gillette. Any other quick?
Yes, comment. No. This company had a logistic distance and how that all worked out.
Yeah, they're based in Louisiana, so there was a concern about distance, but so far, it's been
No issue.
It's been, we just had one minor hiccup. We were allowed, we were able to track the printing. They allow us to do that, and then it's been on par with it. So been good.
Yep, very good.
Thank you. Comment on that. We have adjusted some of our times we prepare things and when we mail them out to account for that. And so once that was tweaked, it's been working out well.
Well, both parties accommodated each other and made it happen. So good.
Okay.
Very good.
It's working well.
Mr. Chairman, to the chair, a question to the Department of Public Works and/or the treasurer. Has there been any complaints?
Well, there's always complaints. People, complaints with regard to whether or not they receive the bill in a timely manner. I've noticed no increase in complaints. There's always somebody who says, I didn't get my bill, or you know, got it late. And the problem is, we don't control the post office, but there's no complaints on the end on the Peregrine end. We have the capacity to track when they're mailed, where they're going to the post office. So I can find no complaints save very early on, before we implemented, you know, some tracking on the very first mailing or so, where we had to get things adjusted, I guess you could say. But after that, I have no complaints about Peregrine.
To the chair, anecdotally, personally, I've noticed no difference as a resident. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. All right, there's no more questions. I have a motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Cusmano, to approve a three-year extension to Peregrine Solutions for the printing and mailing of the utility bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 12. There's a request for authorization for the engineering department to update the township's standard, the township's standard construction specifications, the amount of $20,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Court.
For Van Tiflin. Mr. Chairman, board members, back in 2015, the township adopted some new engineering instructions standards. Those have been working out just fine, made some minor modifications over the seven years that they've been in place. But just like with our master plan and our ordinances, sometimes, occasionally, we need to do a more in-depth review to make sure that we're current with our standards with regard to materials and construction techniques, recognizing that things, technology changes over the years. So we have obtained a quote from our consultant to help us, engineering as well as the DPW, update those standards. $20,000 is the quote. That's a time and material not to exceed number. So hopefully, it comes in less than that, but the board's approval tonight would be for us to spend a maximum $20,000 making that update. So we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Oliver, to authorize the engineering department to update the township's standard construction specifications to exceed $20,000. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, 13, is a request to hire a GIS specialist. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Report. To Davaca.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. I'm requesting authorization to extend an offer of employment for our GIS specialist position. The position was posted in compliance with the Ask Me CBA agreement. HR received a total of three resumes for this position and we interviewed two. Interview team consisted of myself, Jim Van Tiflin, Josh Box, Kevin Johnson, and Karen Ashby, who works for Fishback Consulting. And we are recommending the hire of Molly Marks to the position of GIS specialist. If approved, it's contingent upon successful completion of all post offers or post offer requirements. The effective date of hire will be sometime in March of 2023. This is a budgeted position. Thank you for your consideration and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davaca. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of questions. I had communications with Van Tiflin Davac regarding whether this applicant under the job description. Typically, the requirement that the applicant have a geography or cartography, GIS, computer science, public administration, or related field, plus three years of direct related GIS experience, or an associate's degree, and that's in the conjunctive, five years directly related GIS experience. So the residents are aware, could they elaborate on why this applicant is qualified?
Davaca, you want to take that, or you want one of the review team to take it? We have a few of them here.
Hey, we both can, if you want. I can start. So like I mentioned earlier, we only had three people who applied for this position, so we didn't have a great pool of candidates. Molly Marks did definitely stand out. I understand your concern, trustee Cusmano. She's been doing this since 2020. We're going into 2023, so it'd be three years. She did have four months while she was in college. She did some stuff in Newmont, Arizona. She also did four months in New Mexico. And we also had our, like I mentioned earlier, our consultant from Fishback, and she agreed with us that this lady was more than efficient to do the position. We were all happy with her. I mean, if we probably had 20 candidates, I'm sure Molly would still have been our first pick.
Okay. And to the chair, is there a probationary period for this position, or is it, once it's filled, is it?
It's 180 days.
Okay, six months. All right, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano. I guess for the sake of anyone who's watching, I don't know, Jim or Josh, who want to feel this, you just expand a little bit on what the GIS person will be doing for us and why, and really specifically why this role, A, is unique, and B, why it's become important to have this person on staff.
And so back when the township went through at Saw Grant, we established a GIS. So basically, what we did is we mapped the entire sanitary sewer system using this township, the sun's mapped all the water system. So we are in the process of, as new sub come online, we have to have those back information added. The DPW is going in and inspecting sewers all of the time. You've approved contracts with various TV and cleaning crews. They do manhole inspection. All those things are, all those records are then taken and linked in this mapping system, essentially, is what the GIS is. And so you can go to a specific location on the map, click on whatever the feature is, and gain all sorts of information. This can be used internally. We use it quite a bit. The DPW uses it a lot more, and they hope to be using it a lot more as time goes by. But it can also be simplified and put on the website, for example, for residents to use, so they could click on their own parcel and gain all sorts of information that they might have to otherwise call and talk to the staff here. They want, you know, plans for their house, or they, you know, want to have their tax information, and want to know what their zoning is for a particular piece of property. They could go to GIS, click on a couple of links, and all that information pops up on their screen. So it's efficient for us to use, but it's also something that we're hoping, eventually, with this new hire, we're going to be able to have available to us as well. We are currently having a consultant do the work. Karen, that was mentioned earlier, who helped us do the interviews. She works for Fishback. They have been doing this work for us. So we've looked at it. We can have somebody come in-house and do most of that work on their own for basically the same amount of money that we're spending. But we're hoping also that we're able to expand this to other departments so that we have more information that's readily available. It's easier to use. You don't have to go down in the basement, find the information, copy it, scan it, email it to somebody. It's right available, and you can grab it off your screen and send it to whoever's asking for the information. So that's, that's basically what this position would be doing.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Van Tiflin.
Just a question, if I may.
Yep, Mr. Chair.
I remember our conversations about this position during the budget process and the thoughts, and that it was a good thing to do to have the position to share within departments and so forth. You mentioned that it's a roughly budget offset, but do you have an approximate knowledge of how much we've been spending to have that done by vendors or outside firms?
Yeah, I think it was right around $80,000 that we're currently spending. And I would say that that's probably what we're doing. We're maintaining our system, but it's the minimum that, you know, because my experience as a consultant before I came to work here is that successful GIS usage within a municipality really does depend on having somebody in-house that you can go to when you have issues. You know, if you need a map made, there's all sorts of stuff that a person with these qualifications can do that it's more difficult to have a consultant do it. They're, you know, sitting in Texas somewhere, you can't, you know, interact with them, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And just another point is, this is just kind of another step toward digitizing all of our records. So and one of the things we had discussed early on about adding this position is that eventually, even the building department inspectors could be in the field doing an inspection, pull up whatever history of the records they have. Hire can use it for the same way DPW planning. So once it's, it may take years to get there, but once it's fully integrated with all the departments, it'll be a tool everybody uses.
Just a quick question. Mr. Box, in the planning, how is that going to help us in the planning? Can you explain for the planning members, when we get our packets and
Sure. So it will integrate all of the zoning and kind of what Mr. Van Tiflin mentioned. You know, if you're a resident and there's, you know, a new development coming in next door, or a potential for a development, if it's a vacant property, you can figure out what's allowed, what zoning would allow to be built or constructed next door. You can figure out where, if there's an easement on your property, if there's flood plains, all that information will be included in there.
So that'd be, that'd be helpful as a planner.
Absolutely.
Just for the commission and even the residents, when a lot of times residents will come here and ask us questions, that just what you said would have answered.
Yep.
And when you had to come to the meeting, they'd already know the answers.
Correct.
By obtaining that information. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Clerk Posey.
Yes.
I just wanted to add that we used the GIS specialist from Fishback extensively during redistricting. And we continue to have to refer back to them when we're trying to use QR codes that allow our voters to see where they're registered to vote by using the map that they create. And we anticipate having to use them again in January when we believe the precincts will be increased to 4,999 registered voters, which will require us to redraw our maps again in our precincts and boundary lines. So we've used them extensively in the last year and anticipate using them again in the future. So it's been a benefit to our department as well.
Thank you, Clerk Posey.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, discussion?
One last item. It's my understanding that there's a letter of understanding with the applicable union. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cusmano.
If I may make an observation, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Thank you.
So trustee Cusmano had contacted me earlier, asking for a assessment of the full-time employee growth within the township over the last number of years. So with the help of the finance department, HR department, I was provided that information. The township in January of 2020, for example, we had 118 full-time employees. As of today, we have 119 full-time employees. So this makes 120. But effectively, the growth of the employment at our township has been less during that period of time than the growth of the population of the township for most of those years. So I think at this point, we, the township has done a pretty good job of ensuring that make sure that the hires we make are prudent, the hires that we make are justified, and that we're being very careful when we do decide to bring on additional staff. I'd just point out that over a 10-year period, there's been new firefighters added, there's been different decisions made. COVID affected things, so our actual full-time employee count fell during the COVID year because people weren't being replaced when they were retiring and so forth. But the growth is certainly in our government is not excessive on the growth of our population. As a matter of fact, it's probably below that growth. But just wanted to point that out. And I hope that information was satisfactory to trustee Cusmano.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, to the chair, I will confirm and admit that I did make that inquiry of treasurer Gillette. And he did generate this full-time headcount, which is full-time employees, and it's, the data points that he just pointed out is consistent with what that chart shows. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I think that's thorough of an examination of a new position as I've ever witnessed.
I was thinking the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so returning to the matter at hand, is there any more discussion about the hiring of Ms. Molly Marks as a GIS specialist? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by treasurer Gillette, to hire Molly Marks as our new GIS. Vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item, thank you, Mr. Davac.
Thank you, board.
On to item 14. Is there a motion for to approve a quote from AVI for the boardroom video production system upgrade in the amount of $22,693.97?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Court. So this item is prepared by my office. So as most of the residents may recall, we made some changes just after we adopted our budget. Without a broadcast media department, we have been using other means to record and publish our meetings. This is something that we've been working towards, these particular improvements. Let me back up. We also approved, and I don't remember how long ago it was, but we are going, we purchased Civic Media, which is another module of the Civic Plus platform. And that's going to allow us to live stream meetings. These improvements are necessary in order for us to integrate the Civic Media module. It will also allow us to take the same camera feed that will feed the live stream and then feed a meeting platform like Zoom. And there's also some equipment involved, and there'll be some programming that they will help us do so that the use of the equipment in the control room back there will be much easier. It'll be pre-programmed. And as we, again, as we approved a few weeks ago, a number of our staff are going to be trained on it. So we'll have, we'll be doing that internally. So I'm happy to answer any questions or discussion.
When will it be up and running?
That I don't know. They've been very busy. They've got, I don't know if we have an exact date on when they're going to come in and install this equipment. It took a long time to get them, our quote, together for us. We were working on them for a couple of months.
Is he ripping out a lot of stuff and replacing, or?
Just a couple of things. They're going to change out a SWIT. They're not, they're going to reprogram some of the, mostly the equipment we already have, and they're going to be adding a couple of small things. They called them, I have the name here, these what are they called? Hold on, I know.
I'm doing without.
Okay. There's a couple of devices they're going to install that allow the feed to come out simultaneously into different.
Okay, do hickeys.
Do hickeys.
We did.
Streaming media appliances. It's awful, right?
Okay. That'll be good.
It should be worth noting that McComb Township is a participating member in the TIPS Purchasing Cooperative. This should be worth noting that Compton Township is a participating member in the TIPS Purchasing Cooperative. And AVI Systems is, has approved contracts through that cooperative. So be satisfying the purchasing policy by going through that cooperative.
That's it?
Yeah. With that, a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Nevers, to approve the purchase of the boardroom video production system upgrade from AVI Systems in the amount of $22,693.97. Members, please vote. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item 15. It's a request to approve a hold harmless and indemnification agreement with the McCombe-Clinton Library. Your motion?
So moved. Score.
Um, as described in your board packet, the McCombe-Clinton Library has agreed to allow us to use their parking lot as part of our festivities for this Friday's tree lighting ceremony. And in exchange for that permission, I offer to present this hold harmless agreement to the board for approval. I'm happy to answer any question. Questions? Looking by Trustee Lucido or by Trustee Oliver to approve the hold harmless and indemnification agreement with the McCombe-Clinton Library. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, board members. All right, moving on to our second public comment. This is for non-agenda items. Anyone just fitting remotely wishes to speak, please digitally raise your hand. Anyone present wishes to speak, please approach the microphone. I don't see anybody present. No one digitally. No one wishes to make public comment? We will move on to board comments. Trustee Lucido.
Uh, just one. Congratulations to the new GIS specialist on our new position. From above. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lucido. Trustee Nevers.
I don't have really any comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nevers. Trustee Oliver.
Same thing. Molly Marks. I think that's going to be a great asset to this community. Wanted her work. Happy to see the new media equipment coming updating. And I'm also happy that we're having success with the utility bills. I did question out of Louisiana, but it's working. And obviously we're working together and that's all that matters. So that's good.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver.
And that's it.
You're just Oliver. Trustee Cusmano.
No comments tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Cusmano, Treasurer Drollet.
Seven and a half minutes where the comments, I'd like to start by, I'd like to start by laying Miss Marks on her position with the township. But also, I feel a little more emphatic about that now that I've sat on this board and seen the process that it go through and the process that takes place, even adding a position. So that's a position that starts many, many, many months ago in the budgetary process, a position that had been probably discussed in previous budget and didn't make it through that process. And then of all, there's a, you know, several meetings of discussion to justify whether or not the impact will be, what the cost savings will be, what the benefit is to the residents. After it makes that entire process, then there's the hiring process in which people are applying and then reviewed by a committee that review, that reviews them, recommendation is made, then that person's got to pass a series of health tests and other other tests to be brought on board. The result of that long process is it's actually pretty hard to become a new member of the, of the new township employee. You've got to go through sometimes years before that position even becomes available and then a ton of scrutiny to get to this point. So while it seems like it's it's routine, you know, welcoming Miss Marks to our township. It's actually quite a process to get here. So it's quite an accomplishment. I'm looking forward to meeting her and looking forward to the value that she's going to add to our community. I also just like to note that I think you're going to touch on Friday. Is that, are you going to touch on that?
I will touch on Friday.
Well, then I'll relinquish the rest of my time to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I thought you were going to go on for a while.
I trust that you will.
Uh, congratulations, Miss Marks. Welcome aboard. We're looking forward to what
Hey, what about me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about you. You're not sitting here.
I'm still here.
Would you have some comments tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I just wanted to say hi to all my board members from Mount Pleasant, my old stomping, stomping grounds, Central Michigan University. I am here attending the Clerk's Master Academy, which is the required courses to maintain my clerk certification. We've had a lot of discussion here regarding the implementation of proposal two, the processes that our Michigan voters voted in favor of. And also extensive training in leadership and media management in anticipation for 2024. So I look forward to bringing all that back to the township and utilizing it during our next election cycle and seeing all of you at our tree lighting tomorrow or Friday night. So I look forward to seeing everybody there.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Okay, I already welcomed Miss Marks. I want to congratulate my alma mater, DLSL, on winning a second consecutive state championship in football. And anybody remembers, we had a lot of the McCombe Township members of the team, and I think there was like 25 of them, plus a couple of coaches come. And I'm hoping to repeat that. I mean, a lot of McCombe Township residents who are on that a back-to-back consecutive, back-to-back championship team. So that's pretty exciting for for a lot of us. I want to make mention that the Parks and Rec Master Plan Draft is available for public input for the next 30 days. The plan is on our website, at the Parks and Rec Building, and at the planning counter at Town Hall. So please take the opportunity to comment and share your opinions on the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Your input is very valuable. And as Treasurer Drollet alluded to, to Friday night is our tree lighting ceremony. Time starts at 6:30 PM. Please come early and get a good location. There is going to be music and lights and there'll be crafts in the rec center. We are hoping Santa makes yet another appearance with his busy schedule, and there's going to be a lot more and some surprises too. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Trustee Cusmano makes a motion to adjourn. Score.
Any discussion? Motion by Trustee Cusmano, supported by Trustee Oliver to adjourn the meeting. Members, please vote. The motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.